I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education.
The United States of America, Integra Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we will start as we always do with the public comment on agenda items. Again, the public, if you choose to speak on an item now, then you won't speak on it when it comes time for the vote. So you get a choice of doing one or the other. And again, you can't speak on the same item at the end of the meeting either. So you get one bite at the apple on a particular issue. So, having said that, any member of the public which wish to come forward and, if so, state your name and address and address the board? Seeing none, thank you. The item of business today is appointment of the Advisory Committee on Operational Effectiveness. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education hereby moves to establish an Advisory Committee on Operational Effectiveness per BOE bylaws Article 2, Section 4, Paragraph B, and prove the charge as described in the commission statement per enclosure number 1. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, do I have a second? Mrs. Maxon Canelli. So, this was discussed at our last meeting, and I had outlined the basic thoughts that I had, and then by the end of the week emailed out, first to the officers who made some suggestions, and then to the full board, and the proposed commission statement. And so, time for discussion is now. Any comments that people wish to make?
Would you start with the maker of the motion?
Nope. Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
First, I stand as, sit as enthusiastic as I was before for the idea of this committee. I think it's vital that we get this feedback. I think it's vital that it's feedback beyond just this board. There are so many perspectives out there that we would be lacking without such a committee. And the decisions before us are of too momentous a nature not to. So, thus my second, and thus my offering to speak. I do, however, want to open up one part of this for discussion, and I had crafted a motion to amend the commission statement that's before us, and I do have copies here, but before I hand that out, I don't know if other board members would like to weigh in on the general commission statement before I hand this out.
We could have discussion on the general commission statement and any ideas that you might have for change, and then the conversation might either instruct your amendment or not.
Okay.
Your choice.
All right, so then I'll go forward, and if everyone, if the feedback is quite clearly negative, then that would be that direction. The language I was looking to impact was that under membership, which, again, my reaction in the last meeting, I don't take back one word of what I said. And the idea of reaching out to the public, I stand as close to as I did back then. But I will admit that I didn't consider carefully enough the membership and how unwieldy this could become. And so, the amendment that I was looking to offer was limiting the membership of the ad hoc committee, the voting members, to members of our elected officials who are elected for their areas of expertise and for their, the people and the town members that they represent, and to address the public, and that would include the bargaining units, and not just limiting it to two. Student representatives and the at-large members to just members of the community, and to address them in a series of focus groups. I have some ideas for how that could happen with the committee in terms of the organization of that, but the ultimate idea being to bring the membership down to a level of eight to 10 members, allowing some latitude to the other town bodies in terms of how many members they would like to have represented on there, and then have that be the functioning, more efficient group. Because what I'm already hearing is many members of the public expressing interest to me. I've heard of members of the public expressing interest to members of the board. And my concern is that how do we privilege one over the other as a voting member? One board member, last meeting, referenced the notion of, let's make sure we don't just have, and my phrase, not hers, you know, not just the usual suspects. How do we make sure that all groups get represented, all schools get represented? And, again, I am unwavering in my support of the committee, but I don't think that's the idea of an efficiently-run committee with the need to bring forward recommendations to three different deadlines. And it's, I think it can be done, but it certainly is going to require a focus and a commitment, and that's what elected officials have been put in that position for. And so, absolutely not closing the door to members of the community, but also not privileging a few members of the community ahead of all others. They are not elected to represent anything but, but no one. And so, I don't, I'm increasingly uncomfortable with saying, this person, that person, that person, leaving out whole swaths of town members who have already started to express interest. And so, I believe we should be tapping into those members of the community through focus groups. Of course, they're all invited to come to the members that are, you know, noted under FOI, publicly noticed meetings, but, so that's the gist of what I was looking to open up for conversation.
Just for a clarification, you may recall that we created a advisory or ad hoc committee to establish educational goals, and that state law requires that the community be represented on that committee. But the practice of that committee, and I presume will be the practice of this committee, is that they're there with full voice, so they're not limited to, quote, being a member of the public coming in for a focus group and three-minute comments here or four-minute comments there, but they're full voice at the committee meeting, but it is actually the three Board of Education members who cast the vote. That was the process that was used in setting the educational goals, and clearly those three members listened to the total discussion when they were casting their votes, but the actual votes come from those three members, and the others are there with voice. So just so that the board understands that that was the process used before.
But am I correct in understanding, though, that as it's worded here, these additional members are all voting members? And only those people on the committee are voting members? So that's the members of the town bodies as well as the select additional members? The only voting that's indicated on here is the election of the chair, and then...
No, the ad hoc committee is established per the bylaws, and so, the committee follows the bylaws. And if, and if there's a conflict between where one sentence is written versus the other one, it's the bylaws that control.
So, to be clear, the only voting members at all are the Board of Ed members?
For this committee.
Right, okay, so I apologize for my misunderstanding on that. It does not change my position on how I'd like to see this go forward, but thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Asa.
I would like to echo what Ms. Maxon Canelli said. As I stated in the last meeting, in no way do I want to disenfranchise anyone in the community or any group, but I wholeheartedly agree with what's just been said in that I would like to keep this actual committee focused to that around eight or 10 members, which would be the three Board of Ed, one or two from Board of Finance, one from Board of Selectmen, and a few from the RTM. And I think that number range gives you the latitude to do that. I also agree with including the community through this type of setup, because I believe it allows more people from the community to participate and voice, but it also won't necessarily, in my opinion, slow down the process. So I agree, and I just want to voice my support for this, and I think it's a good kind of meeting in the middle of getting us off the ground and running.
Other board members have comments. Mr. Patton.
So I'm kind of in the middle between Ms. Maxon Canelli and Mr. Asa in terms of structure. I agree that the core committee should be eight people, but in terms of the town bodies, if you have two Board of Finance, one from each party on the RTM, and a Board of Selectmen and three Board of Ed members, that's eight. So to go beyond eight core members kind of clips off the, you know, the bottom half of this in terms of members of the public and people at large and experts in the community, et cetera, which I think are kind of valuable to this. I'm kind of like playing devil's advocate with myself here, because I remember serving on, I don't know if it was an ad hoc committee, but a community committee led by a former Board of Ed member to create a mission statement for this body, and there was between 15 and 20 people on this committee of various members of the community, including RTM, et cetera. And to get just one or two lines of text, you know, approved, because everybody had a say and voted and whatever, and everybody did vote in that committee, it was weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks. And I don't want to see that happen if, you know, the committee's headed in a specific direction on a specific problem to address, you know, consolidating resources for something and, you know, and then some people over here out of left field have, you know, a dissenting opinion, and everybody gets to vote. You know, it shouldn't be political, it should be for the benefit of the town. So I guess my question to the body is, what's the happy medium in terms of limiting the number on the committee, giving everybody a vote, yet not letting it become too expansive?
Again, I have to emphasize, everybody has a voice when it comes to all of the discussion and the data that comes forth, and everybody has a voice. Ultimately, it is the three Board of Ed members that actually cast the vote for that recommendation, just so that you understand the difference between voice and vote.
But is that a, so, you've got two sides to the voting aspect. There's the voting when you're talking about various issues inside the committee, and then there's a vote of the final results of that committee coming out of the committee coming to this board, which is usually where the three Board of Ed members would vote in an ad hoc committee. But internally, there's all sorts of discussion, and you do census of the body and that sort of thing.
How the committee and the committee chair...
Understood.
...handled that kind of talk by consensus, but then come to an actual vote, I think that's up to the committee.
Can I just...
Did you raise your hand? I want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak.
I just wanted to address something since he...
Do you mind, Ms. Pittil? Mr. Asa.
Sorry. Mr. Patton, just to be clear, I know you said you were kind of in the middle between Ms. Maxon Canelli and I. We're on the same page. So, just to be clear, I'm supporting what she's saying with the eight to 10, and that extra two would give the latitude to, let's say, have four RTM members. But that's what my thinking was. So I just, just wanted to be clear, I didn't want there to be confusion, because you were saying you were in between us.
It seemed like one of you was going more towards no more than eight that either get to vote or have a real say, and then, and then you, but, again, it was kind of it.
Just to be clear, just to be clear, I'm supporting...
So both of you wanted to limit it to about eight or 10 at the most?
For...
Yes.
Gen nod, so, okay, got it.
Ms. Pittil, followed by Mr. Gerber.
I share in the interest of that. I think 15 people on this is a lot, especially when they're open meetings and they're FOI requestable, and anyone who has anything they want to say, I'm sure can come and speak. I want this to be productive. I want them to have adequate time to look at this. And looking at this, they already have a short timeframe from January 15th, so I would support your amendment.
Mrs. Gerber.
I guess just to the chair, I just want to clarify, because I know, I believe that you've started talking to some of the other town bodies, members.
Yes, I have.
Are they aware of the fact that they are not going to be voting members of this committee? Just because, I mean, I know...
I didn't go into that level of detail when, I sent them the commission statement, but no, I didn't go into that level of detail.
Okay, because, I mean, I draw this, drew the same conclusion that Mrs. Maxon Canelli did, that they would be voting members. So I just thought it might, it would probably be important just to share with them that they are, in fact, not going to be voting members of the committee, and that only the three board members who are assigned by you will be voting members.
Other comments on Mrs. Maxon Canelli's point of discussion, Mr. Llewellyn?
Generally speaking, the recommendations that are put forth, are they binding or not binding on the administration?
They're not binding, they're suggestions or recommendations to this board. It is this board that actually casts the final vote.
Okay, and then it says here, the BOE chair shall appoint three members from the Board of Education, and then later on, we talk about the committee will have eight to 10. Is that inclusive or exclusive? The way I'm reading this is it's inclusive, but you're amending it to be eight to 10, which is, I thought we were discussing. So, does that mean it's really five? Plus three?
Based on what you're seeing here, the maximum participation would be 13, if we filled every spot that is here, but, 12, I'm sorry, 12.
Well, the way it reads now...
Yeah, three, plus one from the Board of Selectmen, one from the Board of Finance, two from the RTM, then two from bargaining unit representatives, certified and non-certified.
So, I guess my comment here is, since the board chair selects the three members, who then select a chair for the committee, and then the board chair gets to elect or appoint folks to sit on the committee, I don't see there being a lot of diversity on this committee. You know, if you want to do it that way, get representation that's going to be slightly more diverse, you know, each board member could nominate somebody for the committee. I think there's too much power concentrated in your selection of individuals to sit on the committee. I think we're getting away from what I thought I heard at the last meeting, which was getting more community involvement. It sounds like we're kind of getting this back to that same old group of folks. So, you know, I think eight to 10 is, I get the concept of being unruly at 12 to 15, but since it's, since the non-voting members anyway, and since the three board folks vote anyway, and what I thought I heard last time is it's going to be broken into different areas, staffing, finance, facilities, like, I mean, if you break it into each of these categories, that's too much. So a bigger group, I think, all reporting back is actually probably better. But I do think that we are, you know, taking away the power that we could get from a more diverse set of individuals, from the public participating.
Yeah, just for clarification, our bylaws invest in the chair the appointing authority to committees, but the way in which this has worked is I've asked the Board of Selectmen to, quote, recommend effectively appoint somebody from their board, the same with Board of Finance, the same with RTM, the same with the bargaining units. It's not the chair of this board picking people from those bodies, it's accepting the recommendation that they have made.
I'm not sure this says that, but I hear what you're saying.
And then I added the, my original concept is I added the three at-large, I don't call it three, but the at-large members, so that if the collection of people that was suggested by the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, RTM was not representative, did not have a diverse viewpoint on it, that we would then be able to get that viewpoint on it by having at-large members. That was the concept.
So, cutting it back to eight to 10 kind of eliminates that, because by the time you've filled Board of Finance, RTM, bargaining units, student rep, I'm not sure there's space left for anyone, but I get back to what I said before. If you want to get creative thoughts that are, you know, slightly different, I think we need to move away from, you know, the elected officials, at least for the input. I think we have to go to the professionals, frankly. So, I mean, each of the elected officials has their own profession, but I think we could bring a whole lot more to it if we include the community to a greater extent.
Yeah, one of the things that might be helpful for Mrs. Maxon Canelli to clarify is, will her motion suggest that it's only elected officials, which would mean the bargaining unit representatives or the student representatives, which was suggested at our last meeting, would not be eligible? So, Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
And I think in a minute, I'll just pass this out this way, we're all looking at what Mr. Asa and I have been looking at. Yes, the members of the committee are the elected town officials, that's what I'm proposing, but it's, actually, Mr. Llewellyn is, whether he realizes or not, supporting exactly the point I'm trying to make, which is that we need to get professionals, you know, whether it's accountants, whether it's construction, whether it's builders, whether, no matter what it is, under all these categories, which we cannot possibly hope to fill with three at-large members. And so I think the whole notion of, let's not privilege one or two perspectives, but instead, here's the efficient body that is going to be committing to these series of meetings, and then having a series of focus groups where, I mean, I think of the, I can't remember actually if it was a town hall meeting that the board was having, or if it was just public comment, where we had a retired superintendent come and speak to the board. I believe that was the last, the spring town hall meeting. I mean, that's a perspective we never could have tapped into, because we didn't know he was here. And yet, what an interesting perspective for all of us. And that's, it was in thinking of that and in thinking of the wealth of experience, and again, I couldn't agree more with Mr. Llewellyn about the idea of needing people who are more expert in fields than could possibly be. And so that rather than, as I keep using the phrase, privileging a very, very, very small handful, that we should instead say, okay, the efficient body that is attending all of our meetings, you know, to make these recommendations, be down to the elected officials who know to whom they are accountable, which is the town, and that they will organize a system of focus groups, obviously, then there's the whole publicity fact, you know, aspect, et cetera, exactly to Mr. Llewellyn's point, which is to open the door so that we are getting any perspective that is willing to step forward. So, with that, Mr. Dwyer, if it's okay with you, if I could hand the language out just so that everyone's looking at what I'm looking at.
Before the amendment gets handed out and put on the floor, is there anybody else that wants to make a comment before that happens? Mr. Asa.
I just want to echo what you said, Mr. Chairman, that I think, unlike Mr. Llewellyn, I was under the impression of what you said, where you will be going to the different town body leadership and asking them to put forth members, and hopefully by doing that, we avoid that proverbial old group of people, and hopefully that leadership from both sides, both Democratic and Republicans, put forth people for the committee that can do exactly what Ms. Maxon Canelli just said.
At the moment, I've heard back from everybody except for the Republican Caucus of the RTM, but the other bodies have, knowing that we want to get this going as quickly as possible, have gotten me names. Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
Hi.
Whoop.
Sorry.
I didn't see you raise your hand when I asked if anybody else wanted to speak.
I asked on this side. Okay.
So, Mrs. Max, why don't you get it handed out, and while it's being put around, Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I just want to clarify what's being proposed, because it sounds as if, while we're saying that we want to have more diversity on...
You want to clarify what Mrs. Maxon Canelli is proposing?
Right, both she and Mr....
Let's get her get back to the table and then...
Okay.
Because if you ask for clarification and she doesn't hear you asking. So now, would you like to put it on as an official motion, and then we can talk about it?
I'm fine with listening to Mrs. Lou McCormick first.
Okay, so why don't you ask for your clarification?
Okay, so, we're just, I think, it sounded like you were all agreeing that we wanted increased diversity and perspective and professional input from different community members. But I guess what concerns me from just this peripheral look is that it sounds like we're limiting ourselves, again, to public officials, or it seems like limited to political parties. And I guess by continuing to go through Republican and Democrat, we are missing like a third of our population, which is not affiliated to either. And I, and I'd say that a good chunk of Republicans and Democrats are probably inactive as well. And perhaps they could be the best professionals, and I don't know that, we don't know that that's the case. And we don't know that just because they're not political doesn't mean that they are not huge education advocates. So I continue to struggle with the idea of continuing to tie politics to education. Other states don't do it this way. We continue to go back and insist that our elected officials are by-party, everything has to be by-party. I think that in this particular instance, we let party go. We don't need political parties, or the mention thereof of any of those officials. We want individuals from this town who are interested, who are dedicated to education, who are interested in operational efficiencies, who, either professionally or personally. I think that if we continue to tie politics to education, we walk down a very, I would say, just not as honest and true a road as we could, because we're limiting the scope of the information and how we're looking at the information. And it may not necessarily work that way, but I can't see it as being as honest a set of information as it would be if we opened it completely and eliminate the whole political conversation around selecting individuals for an educational and also kind of operational efficiency discussion.
So, back to Mrs. Maxon Canelli, do you wish to put the amendment in front of the body?
May I specifically respond to that comment, and then I will put the motion forward?
Fair enough.
To Mrs. Lou McCormick's point, first of all, there's absolutely no mention of party in this motion. These are the, these are the elected town officials to represent the town, who are going to be the ones making the financial decisions and the priority decisions. So, that is who they are, that's what they have stepped forward to volunteer to do. But you talk about Democrats and Republicans, out there, we've got unaffiliateds, we have Green Party, we have the Independent Party, we have the Working Families Party, we have students, pre-K through 12, perhaps each needs a representative. We have 17 schools, we have seniors, we have six bargaining units, we have a wealth of professions. That is exactly my point in putting forward this motion, which is, we cannot possibly represent all of them. Therefore, why should we privilege three at-large members from all of those potential constituencies? That if we have the efficient group of elected town officials who will be impacting these budget decisions for this town and for the children that we are fighting for, that I'm looking to restrict that that would be the ad hoc committee that would then be opening its doors through a series of focus groups to every group you just named and I just named, and that is regardless, with no regard for political party. It's Town of Fairfield giving ideas to help the Town of Fairfield manage the coming situation. And that, right now, between the motion as originally made and this amendment, you have a choice, and it's either create a more efficient functioning group of eight to 10 members who will actively seek out input from all members of the community, or you have a larger group of hopefully committed people who, to make all of the meetings, all of whom scheduled, you have to try to sink whoever is doing that, and that you will be selecting, well, is it the teachers' union? Is it the administrators' union? Both could undoubtedly be interested. We have the custodians, the secretaries, the paras, the, what's the sixth one I'm leaving out? The special ed trainers. We have all of those bargaining units and all of the groups that I mentioned. So they're still fighting it out to be a recognized member of this ad hoc committee. And my suggestion is, is that rather do that, rather than privileging a few at the expense of many, create with my amendment the one functioning efficient body which will then actively seek out absolutely every group that you have named and I have named. And as it stands right now, between the current commission statement and this amendment, it is an either-or proposition of, either, both of them involve the elected town officials. Those are the logical people to bring in on this, because otherwise, I'll just leave it at that. These are the two, this is the original motion and the amendment that have been brought, that are about to be brought forward. So, to that, Mr. Dwyer, I would like to make the motion. However, I did have a question, and I apologize, since obviously I already made a mistake regarding ad hoc committees and who votes for them. The first two motions that were on here are, in fact, the two terms interchangeable. If you look up at the top where it says, so the motion is to amend... you look up at the top where it says, so the motion is to amend, but I actually have three amendments. The first two are wording thing that I did completely slip my mind to check with you about, that the wording goes from ad hoc to then advisory committee, and I was not sure if the two were interchangeable.
We have used them interchangeably. Ad hoc comes from the Latin, which means special purpose or single purpose only committee. So frequently, ad hoc committee is the more common term used, because there's a time limited. Once they give their report, they're done.
Right.
So, ad hoc is the more common use, but this Board of Ed has used both.
Okay, so then I would, where it says under process change, and below that, under timeframe change, I just wanted to put it in writing, rather than just say it on the board. Striking both of those then, if those are in fact interchangeable. So, it's going straight to the motion being that, on the paper here, it says, under membership, strike from the second sentence, beginning with the Board of Ed Board Chair, to the end of the third sentence, which ends with 15 members. And then, the language below that, which I will read only for those who don't have the copy of the text in front of them, the substitute language would be, "The Board of Education Board Chair will also recruit members from various town boards, including Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and Representative Town Meeting. The ad hoc committee will recruit community feedback in the form of focus groups from the school bargaining unit representatives, student representatives, and members of the general community." The committee will have, and I did make a mistake there with the math, I'm mortified to say, so Mr. Asa's asking me to correct it, too, "The committee will have eight to 10 members. The size and number of the focus groups will be determined by the ad hoc committee."
You make that as a motion?
I'm making that as a motion.
Have a second. Mr. Asa, you have-
Spoken.
-spoken, but you're welcome to make any final comments before the board discusses the amendment.
If I may have the prerogative for it not to be final, I'll just let the board take it from here.
So, I will not be supporting this amendment. Every committee that is ever created eventually disenfranchises somebody, because you can't have 150 people on a committee. So, I don't think that's a, quite frankly, a valid argument. Choices do have to be made to say, is this a diverse, representative, contrarian views and whatnot? And so, that, I think, argument is not germane to this. There are some people in this community who think this committee's purpose is to solve next year's budget problem, or the following year's budget problem. That is the least important function of this committee. I think this committee is being, in my personal opinion, is being put in place to operate through next June, to come up with ideas that may, according to the term that some people have used, create structural change that may take two, three, four, five years to implement, if you're going to create real lasting change that, in combination, ensures the quality of our education, but does it in a more effective or efficient manner. And so, my focus is not on, we've got to get this committee going with a small number of people and get their report in by January, so that we can make some budget decisions. To the extent that there is, there is no more low-hanging fruit in this district. That low-hanging fruit has been grabbed over the last seven years, as we have constructed, constricted this budget. But nonetheless, there may be some ideas that could be surfaced in the fall and brought forward in January that the board could debate, and that the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen and the RTM could debate and make part of next year's budget process. But that's, I don't think the real purpose of this committee. I think the real purpose of this committee is to implement the district priority for excellence, which our superintendent put out, saying, how do we engage in structural change for the long-term good? I especially, I reacted at the Board of Finance when a member there brought this comment up, but I especially object to the idea of not giving our staff, somebody from the certified staff, somebody from the non-certified staff, a meaningful role on the committee. These are the people, 1,400 staff people, who will have to implement these suggestions. And too often, ideas are made at this table, and they're not made with an eye on, will this actually work? And at the Board of Finance meeting, somebody said, well, they're just self-interested union members. I took real exception to that. All of us who have participated in negotiating sessions, all have come to realize, yes, they advocate for their membership, but at the end of the day, we reach agreement in the best interests of the students. I know that the FEA has put suggestions in front of our superintendent as to how to make this school district more effective and more efficient. I personally think that staff need to be at the table, and not just in a focus group, and, you know, and their discussion gets lost, but they're, they're able to participate in the real debate on various issues with a voice, so that the final decision is informed by that. State law does require, when you're setting educational goals for a district, that a broad-based, community-based committee is put in place. Our bylaws don't require it for this kind of discussion, but this committee is likely to debate some of the hottest, most difficult, most divisive issues that face a Board of Ed when we're talking about things. I don't, I think that if you don't have enough people who had real voice at the committee level participating, I think you're going to have a harder time, I'll say, in selling it to the whole community. So, for those reasons, although the, it would appear as though, we haven't heard from everybody, but it would appear as though there might be sufficient votes to go down in this direction, but it won't be with my vote. Let me go to other committee members to make sure they've had a chance to talk. Mr. McPatt?
As written, I don't think I can support this, although I do agree with some of the intent. I think in the exchange text under membership, discussing how the ad hoc committee will recruit community feedback in the form of focus groups limits the, it limits the chair of that committee on how they want to lead that committee, and it kind of puts parameters onto the committee of how it's going to do its research. This is saying that it's going to do its research by focus groups, and that may or may not be the best way to go. I'm not saying that that's not a good way to do things. I'm not saying that there shouldn't be smaller focus groups with experts brought in. I think that's actually a very good idea. But I don't think it should be in the actual charge. I think that should be up to the Board of Ed members or the committee chair. So, I am in favor of limiting the number to less than 15, however. I think if we say whatever it is, if we say it's a maximum of 10, if we say it's a maximum of 12, I definitely think it should have a limit in that membership section of, you know, committee will have a maximum of no more than X members, whether it's 12 or 10 or whatever it is. While 12 is a little more than I would want, I think to hit all the buttons, including if you want representatives from the bargaining unit, I think that's, you know, that's the number you kind of have to hit. I think having, you know, one or two representatives from the bargaining units is helpful. Having Greg Hatzis or Dave Ebling or whoever at the table, somebody who knows the schools or the larger schools or the community at large, how those buildings work, where one building does something, another building might not do something, that they might, you know, have some internal information, as opposed to just kind of bringing them in for a focus group or for a specific meeting to say, hey, we're going to discuss energy efficiencies tonight. Can you come? I think having someone from the bargaining unit to do that, who's already in those buildings, is helpful. I think the big wild card is the three community members. So, if you've got your two RTM, one Board of Finance, one Board of Selectmen, three Board of Ed members, two bargaining unit members, and to get your 12 is the three community members, you're either limited to, I mean, it sounds silly to say, one member of the community, because that's really, like, who are you going to pick for the one member of the community? Three is limiting, but it's not as limiting. So, again, while I'd like to see a person limit, I think, as is this amendment, I don't think I can support it. By the way, to Ms. Maxine Cunnelli, I actually think that we should change the ad hoc slash advisory committee references to one specific thing, probably just put them all as ad hoc committee, because I don't necessarily believe, and though we use them interchangeably, that they aren't always the same thing. So, just a minute to say.
Let me go to you, but first, is there any board member who has not spoken who would like to speak? Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Carnell, and then I'll go to Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli.
Well, I guess I'm kind of torn about this, because on the one hand, I'm, at our last board meeting, there wasn't any discussion about reducing the size. In fact, if anything, I believe we added on to this committee throughout the course of the discussion. And I'm always sensitive to members of the public being aware in advance that something like this is coming forward. That said, now knowing that the only members of the committee who are going to be voting members are Board of Ed members, kind of changes my view a little bit, because I do believe that at least some of the people who have stepped forward and expressed interest, do believe they're going to be voting members. So, I think that that should be clarified, because it may in fact change the interest from some parties. So, I'm, I'm really not sure, to be honest with you. And I do think, having been on different sized committees, I know the bigger the committee is, the more the difficulty is. And of course, there is no way to get representation of our entire town from three, or even five, members of the public. So, I'm not really sure which way I'm headed, but I just wanted to share kind of where it was.
And again, just to clarify, before I go to Ms. Carnell, using the Goals Committee by example, the committee did work by consensus. And then through consensus and decisions are made, it was the three board members who actually voted. But there was meaningful, I'll say, engagement with all the committee members, because they tried to work as best they could by consensus.
Just to, because I did bring up at the last meeting, the ESSU, the Elementary School Space Utilization Committee. Now, that was formed by the first selectmen, which was not formed by the board. However, every single member of that committee did have a vote. It wasn't just a voice at the table, it was a vote at the table. And so, again, I would just stress that I think it's important that everyone understands who actually is going to be able to cast votes at this, because I think there is a difference.
Absolutely. Ms. Carnell?
I guess one of the questions, starting with how, to this whole issue of who will be voting, and only the three board members, and yet other people in the town bodies have been asked, can it be open to the other town bodies to vote as well? I guess is my question, and not just keep it to the three board members. That's the first, I just want to-
But this board could make that as a requirement, yes.
Okay. And then the second thing is, you know, we're voted in by the public in the town, and I don't understand why those people wouldn't be represented on this, as well as, I know it was brought up last time, in addition to having some students. They're the ones that are kind of in the thick of things, day by day. So, you know, I just think it should be opened up to more people. Will it give more headaches? Absolutely. But this way, you get a better voice from the people. Putting together, if I understand this correctly, putting together ad hoc committees will be done by each person, so there may not be any synergy, unless I misunderstood. But the focus groups will be done the way each person wants to do them. I wasn't clear whether they're going to be uniform. It was vague.
My guess is, Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli can probably say what she is assuming is going to happen, but most committees, they'll have discussion and say, okay, how do we engage the community, and shall we have a focus group here? Shall we have a forum here? You know, and so I think, my guess is they'll debate those kind of things, and then settle on the exact format. But that'll be, I would think, the committee's role to do. Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli, do you want to?
Sure. And whether we change this-
To Ms. Carnell's-
So, to Ms. Carnell's point, I think you've described it very well. I, that point on here, I left deliberately vague, because we don't know who the Board of Ed members are, and there are other town bodies involved, who have also had various types of town halls and town and forums and focus groups. So, I think the group could give input, how can we make this workable? How can we make this efficient? How can we make this outreach to all parts of the town, et cetera? So, I left that, you know, in the form of focus groups, and didn't define it further, only to give latitude, so that the committee itself can figure out how to make that work. And I could have just left it as, that the members will be from these town bodies, and will be eight to 10 members, and end my amendment. I specifically put in that reference to the focus groups, and the fact that the size and number of the focus groups will be determined by the committee, because that is my explicit nod to the fact that the community input on this is vital. My point simply is, is that where do you stop? You know, and that's where, you know, a little bit of satire here with my list of, you know, do you reach out to the unaffiliated Green Party, Independent Party, working, you know, et cetera, because I think they all have a vested interest in this. And so, again, where do you stop, and yet still have a functioning, efficient body? So-
I interrupt you for a moment-
Sure.
-because you're going beyond, answering Ms. Carnell's question, and she had the floor.
Okay.
Did you have other issues that you wanted to bring up?
No, that was really it. My concern is, though, as these ad hoc committees are formed, that the same message is put out to everybody. That's what I was trying to say. And leaving it vague, I understand that. I think, Mr. Chairman, you know, how can we maybe change it or reach out to the other town bodies, the ones you've spoken with, and ask them if at this point, they thought they would be voting in this committee?
Typically, at the first meeting, there would be an orientation meeting, where those level of details would be discussed and presented. But if this board wants to say no, whoever's on the committee should have a vote, then we should amend the motion accordingly, and then it doesn't have to be clarified. Let me, so-
A couple of points.
Maxine Cunnelli, you were wrapping up-
Yes, and I'll make this quick.
Llewellyn, and then Mrs. Lou McCormick.
And if that was the feeling of the board, it would be very easy on the first line of my amendment, or of course, on the commission statement itself, to say, the Board of Ed Board Chair will also recruit voting members. That could be a very quick edit if we wanted that. I do, however, completely agree with Mr. Dwyer's characterization of how this committee would operate, and that's from the point of view. I cannot imagine any three board members, candidate or currently sitting board members, who would ever go into something like this, hear feedback, and decide, we're not doing, we're not bringing that recommendation forward, and going against what the group consensus is. So, I'm fine with adding this as all voting members, but I completely agree with Mr. Dwyer's characterization of this, that, you know, it will be a consensus that will be determining the board. For me, the voting members as board members is more a function of, okay, this kind of officially says, we've come to consensus, the three of us are officially voting, and now bringing it before the board. So, it's, it's almost more of a formality, but that said, it's not, you know, a sword I'm going to fall on. The other thing I was going to say is that, to Mr. Dwyer's point, and I will say, whether it's the original commission statement or my amendment gets approved, I am enthusiastic about this, however it is. And I absolutely hear Mr. Dwyer's points about the bargaining units. I've spoken with some teachers. I've spoken with some union leadership, and I think they are, have tremendous ideas. And they have a, I couldn't disagree more with thinking of them as just being self-interested. In fact, in many ways, their self-interest, if you even want to characterize it that way, is what makes them powerfully motivated. They know what's at stake as well. Anyone paying attention knows what's at stake in the state of Connecticut, and I think they are powerfully motivated to be very creative and really think. I will say, though, that any committees like these that have existed before, I'll admit, I'd also thought, there's usually support staff there, that I had seen someone as being, because I agree, for us to just go off on some rude route and not get staff feedback, I did think that was an integral part of this. But again, so those are my comments to the comments we've had.
I'd like to suggest to the board that we have, I'll say, two ancillary questions that have come up, to make it consistent, should we use ad hoc, and whether they should be voting or not. If I could ask that we make those as separate motions, once we settle on the membership, then we'll go back to determine whether we want to do that. Mr. Llewellyn?
From participating in the conversation at the last meeting-
From participating in the conversation at the last meeting, I thought the purpose of this committee was to look at a broad spectrum of ideas and kind of go deep on those. I think that limiting the size of this committee is going to make that job more difficult. What I had thought was going to occur was items were going to be kind of thrown out there, call it, I don't know, 10, whatever they happened to be, and then the group was going to divide up, and you were going to have members of each of those kind of subcommittees moving forward. You know, I'm not sure that with a smaller group, that you can be as engaged in as many different avenues. So, you know, once again, I think we're concentrating kind of the thoughts back toward the center again, and we're excluding the public more so. And, you know, I mean, I understand, Ms. Carnell, how you're seeing it that way, but I think at the end of the day, you know, the vote is going to carry the day. And I know you say you can't see them, members, kind of voting against things that are said, but depending upon how the group is set up, you know, different voices may not get heard.
Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick.
I would agree with the comments that Mr. Lou Allen just stated, and I'd also like to just talk about the size. I would be supportive of staying probably on the larger end of, say, 15 members, even if it is, we're already a group of nine, and we manage to have a fairly cordial, if not very festive, conversation every so often. So if we add, you know, another five or six people, I don't think that that is the end of the world, particularly since a lot of it is brainstorming. And so the more feedback we have, I think, the better, and we're going to find that half of the people will speak and half the people will sit there quietly. So even if we have many people in the room, I think it's the ideas that they bring, and they'll probably quickly get winnowed down to a handful. In terms of the voting issue, I would say that this isn't binding anyways. So if people are going to spend all those hours, let them have their say. If they're the one person who says, no, I don't agree with that, they will feel some pride in being able to express their opinion. I believe we should have all of them be voting members. It's not as if it's binding upon the town or the Board of Ed. We can redirect anyways. But I think it's also interesting information if they make a recommendation only to find that it was, whatever, a nine-six vote, or something even closer, right? So if we find that it was a tiebreaker, then it's kind of like, well, wow, you know, that wasn't really compelling. Whereas if we only have three people presenting and we don't see the full count and the viewpoints, we won't know if everybody was unanimous on this issue, or if, in fact, it was really tight. Or maybe perhaps just the opinion of the three who are recommending to us. So, again, I would say, for purposes of open communication and the greatest feedback possible, I would say let the members be voting. Why not? I don't see that it hurts anything, and I would always say, be more inclusive than exclusive. And when I say inclusive, I don't mean inclusive to the people who are the friends of the chair or to the three members of the Board of Ed, or to the union, or to the town boards. I mean, let's be open. If we want to include senior citizens, let's have a senior citizen in there. Let's talk about the issues honestly, let's hear the problems. I think we only hurt ourselves if we don't try to be honest and listen to all opinions. We may lose out on the best ideas.
Is there anybody else that wishes to make a comment? And then I'll go to Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli for any final comment, and then I'll go to the public. Anybody else wishes to make a comment on the amendment that is in front of us at the moment? No hands, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, do you want to make some final comments?
My final comment, I cannot state this any more strenuously. This in absolutely no way is shutting out the public. Every meeting has public comment. The focus groups are entirely about comment, public comment. It is about having a committee that can function, that can agree to a calendar, can agree to a set, and I'm not even worried about the rules, I'm worried about getting a group that can see this forward. As I said, whether the amendment passes or not, I am enthusiastic that this committee is being formed. And, but in no way is this limiting community input.
Okay. So, members of the public, you will have an opportunity to talk about the main motion, but first we have to deal with the amendment. And so I think you had copies that some members of the public had, so does anybody wish to comment on the amendment and the amendment only? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Bob Smoller, President of the FEA, self-interest notwithstanding. I believe the focus of this committee is operational efficiency, and I can't conceive of a committee that would be focused on operational efficiency without a permanent member who understands how the operation is currently operating. And there is nobody on any town body that has an intimate understanding of how we operate in this school district. That is primarily the people who are closest to the education of our children, which is the staff and the administrators, certainly the paraprofessionals and others. And if you're going to be, think, making thoughts on a committee with real-time discussion taking place, I would certainly think that you would want real-time feedback on whether something's workable, not workable, how it might play out. Just providing some information or suggestions in a focus group, that gets left as soon as the focus group is over, and you don't have the opportunity to get real-time feedback as the items are being discussed. So if you really do want to come out with a good outcome regarding operational efficiency, I would highly suggest that you have members on the committee that have intimate knowledge of how the operation is currently being operated. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public wish to come forward? State your name and address.
Susie, Mesco, 123 Rygate Road. I'm kind of scaring myself because I'm agreeing with people that I don't usually agree with. So, yes, I agree with Chairman Dwyer, and I want the record to show that. That I agree that with the Goals Committee, you know, we had a very diverse group of people. It was a Board of Ed-driven with the Board of Ed Chair, and we did not have voting rights. In fairness, I will say that I felt respected on that committee, that my voice was heard whether or not I had a role as a voting member or not. My biggest concern, and I appreciate what the board member who drew this amendment is attempting to do, because honestly, after watching this on fair TV when this was presented, I am concerned because the volume of this compared to just goals is extensive. And I think that while the amendment is trying to create subcommittees, which maybe would be helpful, this whole itinerary needs to be brought down. And I agree with Mr. Smoller that in Goals, we had a representative from the administration that reported to the superintendent of concerns that we had or issues we had brought up with respect to that. I do think there has to be administration represented in this. My concern is, this ad hoc committee seems to be very top-heavy, RTM, Board of Selectmen, and other town boards, and I'm not really sure who we're trying to work this with. If this is to convince the other boards that the Board of Ed budget is worthy of their support, or is this to have the public participating in a conversation about the goals and directions that the public thinks the Board of Ed should be looking at? And that's what's not clear in this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other members wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Hi, Tina Brown, 35 Quaker Lane. So I'm a resident and I'm also a teacher, and I've realized that our board is unique in that we do have two teachers on this board. However, let's say they're not on the committee of three from the Board of Ed. I can't say what other people do in their job. I can't tell you what a lawyer does. I can complain that the lawyer charges so much money and, you know, for 15 minutes, and he only talked to me for six minutes, or whatever it is. People can't, don't know what teachers do. They have a lot of ideas, and they express those ideas on what teachers do and what our principals do and curriculum leaders do. But when you're talking about reorganization within the school, those are the people that know how it works. Those are the people, as Mr. Smoller said, can tell you, well, that's a really great idea, but that'll never work because of this, this, and this. So you have to have those people there. I don't have an opinion on whether or not they have to be on the eight to 10 or 10 to 15, or if they're an ad hoc committee, but they have to be a part of the process and they have to be listened to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward, speak on the amendment and the amendment only? Seeing nobody, back to the board. Again, I'll go to Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli if she wished to make any opening comment, and then anybody else that wants to make a final comment, and then we'll go to vote. Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
Yeah, I want to reiterate again, from my experience with policy, my experience with the other committees that we have had during my six years on here, there was, any group like this was always staff-supported. And I will, when I crafted this language, it was with that, you know, my understanding, again, obviously, I was mistaken in my understanding on the voting issue, but, so I completely understand the points raised in public comment regarding needing to have some real-time feedback, and it had never occurred to me that that wouldn't be a part of this. Now, the decision of whether, if, you know, if to get this to pass and get it to be a little more under control, we wanted to add them as voting members versus support staff such as what was with the Educational Goals Committee, I don't have a strong opinion, but I couldn't agree more that to do this without real-time staff input could waste a lot of people's time. But as I said, I already said it once before, and I'll say it again now, it never occurred to me that there wouldn't be staff there. So how that gets worked in, I don't have a strong opinion on.
In the third line down on the process, you'll see that this actually names the superintendent of schools who will provide staff leadership to the committee, and in my discussions with the superintendent, she will draw in other staff on different issues as may be required, so she won't be the only person there, but there is a staff leadership to the committee. Other board members that wish to make a comment prior to the vote? Mr. Lou Allen.
I just want to kind of paraphrase something that Mr. Smoller said that I think is important. The thoughts, thoughts are left as the focus group ends, and you need to have members on the committee. You know, I think that is my one concern with having a smaller group with focus committees. I think that things will be said, but with a smaller group, things will be filtered. So I think we should have larger groups.
Seeing no other board members raise their hand, the only change you made to this, again, dealing with the voting and ad hoc issue after we deal with the membership by separate motion, was it's reached eight to 10, correct?
Correct.
The motion is, the amendment is in front of you. Do board members need it to be reread? It's in front of you without any changes at the moment. I don't see anybody's hand going up, so therefore, all in favor of the amendment as proposed by Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, please raise your hand. Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, Mr. Asa, all opposed? Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick, Mr. Mark Patton, Ms. Donna Carnell, Philip Dwyer, and Mr. Lou Allen, the motion fails four to five. So let me deal by unanimous consent because it sounds as though that if we say by unanimous consent, wherever the word advisory committee is, we shall make that consistent and make it ad hoc. Is that a, by unanimous consent, that amendment is made? Okay, that's one down. And on the issue of voting members, do we have unanimous consent that a sentence should be added to make all committee members?
Just add a word. Just add voting.
Okay. Where's, what word do you want to, where's that?
The second line of membership, the Board of Ed Board Chair will also recruit voting members.
Okay, voting members. Will also recruit voting members. So by unanimous consent, adding that word to the original motion? Seeing no objections, so ordered.
Is it better to put the voting there, or put the voting, the committee will have X number of voting members and put the voting there? Or put it in both places? I was reading it as it should go at the end, but I guess it doesn't really matter.
We could put it both places, 12 to 15 voting members. Okay, by unanimous consent, so ordered.
One piece of clarification, please. So in this original language, we still have at-large members of the general community?
Correct.
Okay. So when we're talking about them, they can also be voting members?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
So, any, we're back to the main motion with the ad hoc being used in place of wherever it says advisory, and we're adding voting members and voting members at two locations under membership. Any final comments that board members wish to make on the main motion before I go to the public? Mr. Lou Allen.
I do come back to my point that the chair is soliciting or recruiting members. You know, one of the things you did say before was, you know, you hadn't heard back from the RTC.
No, no, the RTM.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said RTC.
Republican Caucus of the RTM.
Okay, the Republican Caucus of the RTM. But it gets back into the whole politics of it all. It's the Republican side of the RTM you hadn't heard back from. You know, I almost think that each member should be able to, you know, nominate someone to the committee, at least then you'll have a little bit more diversity other than one individual getting to kind of handpick folks. So I kind of throw that out for discussion.
I have no objection to board members saying, I'd like to advance this name. I have had two members of the general community, three, who have been either, two self-nominated themselves and one other was nominated by somebody else. So nominations are welcome, and then we'll see what total group we have and see what the background is of the elected officials who have come on and try and make sure there's a balance based on the recommendations for some of the elected bodies, for those who are hoping that there will be a, I'll say, a contrarian voice. I think that you'll find that it's there. But, yes, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
For the process you just described, would that be a board member would say, go out to a member of the RTM or a member at large and just, if it's a member of those town bodies, that would be encouraging that member to speak to that person's leadership, correct?
Yeah, it's the leadership that I am relying on to, and I am using the term recommend because our bylaws do say that they have to be appointed by the board chair, but effectively their recommendation is an appointment from my perspective. So that's the only reason I use the word appointment because technically I'm supposed to do that. But I'm relying on the leadership to bring a name forward and then add them to the list accordingly. Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So then back to the question of politics. So when you're saying leadership, you mean the leadership of the particular political party or bargaining unit, or what have you?
In the instance of the bargaining units, I've gone to the leadership of the bargaining units. In the instance of the RTM, I asked the majority and minority caucus leaders to do it. I asked the Chair of the Board of Finance and the First Selectmen in the case of those two bodies. So that's what I mean by leadership. Right now, it is, I think it's three to three who happen to be Ds and happen to be Rs.
So can I just clarify? I just want to make sure that not more than half of this group is actually politically driven. So the Board of Selectmen nominates one or two?
Well, I think that'll be impossible because three from the Board of Ed, one from the Board of Selectmen, one from the Board of Finance, two from the RTM, we're already up to seven. So I think it'll be hard unless.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say that the Board of Ed necessarily is political.
You're not counting those.
Yeah, I'm not counting us. I'm just saying from the other, from like the RTC, the RTM, the Board of Selectmen, that sounds like eight.
The RTC.
Oh, no, not RTC.
The RTM.
Just the RTM, the RT, okay, so the arm of it. So they would like be nominating two, right?
The RTM is nominating two.
Right. And the Board of Finance?
Has been asked to nominate two.
One. Okay, so that's three. And then Board of Selectmen, one?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's four. So then only four out of potentially up to 15.
And the Board of Finance? And the Board of Finance, did you, is that included in your?
Oh, that was one, right?
Yeah, one.
So one, one, and two, so that's four?
Correct.
Okay. So then that's, that seems like it's okay. So four out of 15. And then for the members at large, how, and the student representatives as well, is that having to be nominated by, say, a principal, or can they just themselves step up and say, I'm just really interested in this?
Anybody can self-nominate. My intention, so that you know, was to go to the current student representatives to this board and give them the first opportunity to join this group if they wish, and then rely on the headmasters of our two high schools to present one male and one female name. That's the process I was going to use.
But it's, it is open to any student who then decides that they are extremely interested?
That's, I think that's true of, of the community at large as well. I know when, with the Board of Finance, two members of that body had expressed interest, and one name got brought forward. I think several names were thought of at the RTM, and, and so more than one person will ask to be involved and--
And the process then would be to send their information to you?
Yes.
Personally. And same with the members and the general community?
Correct.
And who would make the decision as to who is selected? You would. You would interview them.
I would look at their resume and, and look at their background. This is a committee that's going to look at program, finance, facilities, and staff. You're looking at the four main groups of what an organization does, and so I'll want to make sure that people who are on the committee bring some skill set in one of those four areas.
And just so I understand, so we have four from the kind of--
Other elected bodies.
Yeah, other elected bodies area, and then from the school bargaining unit representatives, how many do we anticipate?
Two. One certified, one non-certified.
And that will represent all of them? And is that sufficient to represent all the interests? So that would be, okay. And then do we have somebody specifically who would be an expert on infrastructure within that, or is that supposed to be the certified, non-certified? I would think that that would be different individual.
Until I get all the names in, I won't know the answer to that question.
Okay, but we are targeting ideally to have somebody who is familiar with the infrastructure as a voting member within this committee?
Yes. Depending on the certif, the non-certified staff person, if it came from a supervisory level of our custodian union, then clearly that expertise would be there. But if suddenly the only person came forward was one of our secretaries, which is also a valid point of view, then I think I would have to look at the at-large membership to see who from the community had that kind of infrastructure and facilities background in favor of that person, so we get that skill set on the committee.
And might the superintendent be recommending individuals for this committee as well outside of just the bargaining units?
The superintendent will recommend names to me as well, but we've asked the two bargaining units, or the bargaining units, to recommend their own names. The superintendent is not choosing who represents the bargaining unit.
Correct. But just separately, as a point of infrastructure operational efficiency, she may have, right, so I wanted to see that. And then members--
Everybody in this audience is welcome to send me a name. Everybody in the community is welcome to nominate a name, and the more we have, the more we can make sure there is a balance of skill sets on this committee.
And you'll be asking for a resume, and we'll be offering each one of them an interview? Is that how this is going to work? I just want to understand what the process is for selection.
Well, clearly, if I, right now, after two weeks, I've had three names suggested. And clearly, if I have a dozen names suggested, then I'll find a way to, to look at their resume and meet with them and make a decision.
Okay.
Some of the names recommended, I may know already, as people at this board know a lot of people in the community.
Okay, all right. So you'll be the clearinghouse for all the information, and if you get more than the 15, then you will, in all likelihood, offer interviews and review the resumes, correct? That's the process. I just want to make sure that these spots aren't going to be filled with the first person who you know, as opposed to looking at, right?
But I am not going to wait a month before we start putting this committee into action. And so we may start with only one at-large person to give time for other at-large people to suggest names, because, one, we need to have this committee start, and I don't want to wait for the very last member to be named before we start the group working.
Which brings me to the question of, so what is the deadline for submitting the name and having the board, I mean, having this committee officially be named?
I was going to name them by the end of this week based on the names that have been already submitted to me. And I'm hoping to have a meeting in the beginning of October, middle of October, as a organizational and orientation meeting, but that does not mean that somebody couldn't be added to the committee at the second or the third meeting of the group.
Okay, so by the end of this week, anybody who wants to be nominated should have their name submitted to you, and a resume can potentially follow once their name is submitted?
Yes, I would like it by the end of this week, but that's not mandatory. If suddenly somebody hears through the grapevine and suddenly comes to me the end of next week, that probably will still be enough time.
Okay.
My guess is, by the end of October, this full committee will be formed, because I might, it might not be right away that I get somebody from the Republican Caucus of the RTM. I know who the certified representative will be, but I don't know who the non-certified representative will be. And so each body that is being asked to recommend uses their own process to decide how to come up with a name. So I'm assuming that somewhere between now and the end of October, all of the, the whole committee will be formed.
And for the student representatives, are you limiting it to 12th graders, or how is that working?
I was going to limit it to high school students, but--
So ninth through 12th?
I was, I was going to, I'm going to ask first the members who are on this Board of Ed if they wish to participate, and they're generally 11th or 12th graders. And if they all uniformly say, thanks, but no thanks, then I'm going to go to the two headmasters. And if the headmaster finds a very energetic, mature, wonderful ninth grader that wants to participate and is, is, wants, wants to do this, I'll leave it in the headmaster's best opinion as to who's the best student from their two high schools.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments that the board wishes to make? Last comment from Mr. Patton, and I'll go to the audience for comments.
So, I guess, two, two questions. One, so there's, after the, kind of to follow up on what Ms. Lou McCormick has been questioning in terms of how the, the different members will be scrutinized and selected, is it, I know it's not, it doesn't seem to be policy for ad hoc committee members to be approved by the board once kind of the slate is in front of you.
Correct.
Is that something that we would want to entertain, or we don't want to go down that road?
Personally, if you tried to go in that route, you would be doing it in violation of our bylaws, and you'd technically have to change the bylaws to allow for that.
That answers that question. You don't need to go any further. So my second question is more of, I guess, through the chair, if I could maybe ask a sense of the body kind of question, we didn't seem to explore the, the number limitation issue much more. So is anybody in favor of putting a specific number instead of having a range as to a maximum of, again, whatever it is, maximum of five, 10, 15, 20, whatever, whatever it is, or?
So right now, the motion says 12 to 15.
12 to 15.
Is there any board member that wishes to change that range?
I would be in favor of, at first, I was going to say a maximum--
Can I, can I finish my, Mr. Patton asked a question. You would like a smaller--
I had, it was voted on, it was voted down, done.
Anybody else wishes on this side of the table, want to follow up on Mr. Patton's idea of talking about these two?
So again, so I'm asking for a sense of the body, we're not voting on anything, so--
So the answer is apparently no.
Jen, Jen has said no. Jessica had just said no. So my, my only comment would be that instead of having a range of 12 to 15, that we just put a maximum of 15 on it that way. If you get 10, you can still, or eight, you can still start your committee, because if it says 12 to 15, and you haven't gotten your 12 yet, technically, you can't operate your committee.
So I'll ask before unanimous consent, instead of having, have 12 to 15, that you could say have up to 15. Does that make sense to people? I don't know that makes a lot of difference, but is there unanimous consent to put in the word up?
Change 12 to up.
To change 12 to up?
No.
So then we, okay, so you'd have to make it as a formal motion?
Okay.
You're not going to, or you are?
I will.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to make amendments to the membership section of the second to last sentence, where it says the committee will have up to 15 members.
Up to 15 voting members.
Change 12 to up.
Change 12 to up, correct.
That's a motion. Do we have a second? It dies for lack of a second.
Seriously.
Okay. Any other final comments before we go to the public? Mr. Asa?
I wanted to take a second to thank the public for their comments, and none of what was said goes unheard by me, I think, or anybody. I can't speak for anyone else. But I think, to get across my fear here, I think people have picked up on it, I think we've been elected to do a job. And in the coming months and years, we're going to have to make some very, very tough decisions, potentially, that some people will be happy with, some people won't. And some of these decisions may include what we're talking about here with regards to structural change. But I think, for me, I think we need to focus, we were elected to do a job, and we need to focus on that. And I, I like the idea of getting input from the community, from the FEA, from the administration, from, from everybody that's been mentioned tonight. But I don't necessarily know, to me, if this is the right way to go about it by forming a committee.
Yep, thank you. With no further comment from the board prior to the vote, is there any member of the public that wishes to come forward? This is on the main motion, so anybody that has spoken on the amendment is still welcome to come forward. So please come forward and state your name and address.
Suzanne Meska, 123 Rygate Road. Wow, it's like a night of firsts. I agree with the last speaker. The intent, I get. I get what you're intending to do. My problem started with structural changes. I mean, just sitting at a redistricting meeting, we saw how Mr. Flynn's comment of structural changes at a Board of Finance meeting during budget was interpreted to be one thing by some people and one thing by others. So already, in the committee purpose, I, I worry that you're skewing in different directions. I would have, really, instead of having a committee, would have rather have seen some sort of survey of some magnitude offered with a set of priorities of thoughts that the Board of Ed was considering under some of these topics, instead of basically opening the front door and saying to everybody, hey, what do you think about facilities and teachers? And, I mean, you hear enough of it at budget time, where everyone starts nitpicking that we have too many of this and not enough of that, in too many books and not enough books. And, you know, you can pick someone on either side of this equation. And I get the intent, and the intent is great. I just think that this is a basket that I don't know what you're going to get from this. Like, I don't know that this might just be too broad to really get the feedback that you're trying to get. So I caution that I, while I, I understand what we wanted to do, and I understand the direction you're trying to go in, I hesitate that this is not going to give the conclusions that you're trying to get. And, and I don't even know what that feedback is going to be useful for, for this board. I think the board needs to make some decisions and, and make a list of things that they're even considering, and then let the public, this, you know, contact the senior center, have a town hall at the senior center, you know, have it as, as a, as an open town hall with RTM members. But you guys tell us what you think you want to do, and then we can then help you with that process. But to do this, I think, is just way too wide open. And I, I think this is, while the intent was good, I think this is a really bad idea. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to come forward and state your name and address? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jason Bluestein. I'm the principal of Bear Elementary School. I'm also the president of the Administrators' Union, the FSA. My, my only, I appreciate the conversation about how many members, you know, you want to have on the committee. My pitch would be just to have a representative from the administrative ranks, a representative from the teachers, and have a non-certified rep, too. I think all of them bring a unique perspective to the conversations that you're looking to have. And I think limiting it to just two, one certified and one non-certified, probably wouldn't be enough. So I, I understand the debate about how many people you want to have on, but I would just make a pitch to have an administrator, a teacher, and a, and a non-certified person at minimum, just because I think they bring a different perspective to the conversations you're looking to have. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward? State your name and address?
Christine Vitale, 254 Auburn Hill Road. I'm just going to reiterate my comments of the last meeting. I still feel like it needs to be two committees, one to really focus on the immediate. I think the town bodies are looking for a list from you to address the budget challenge that we're going to be facing next year. And I think that committee should be focused. I think it should be small. The members on it should be elected officials with, you know, members from the teachers' union and the administrators' union with guidance from staff. In terms of long-term plans, I think that a lot of different stakeholders need to be involved, but before that work is even done, I would like to see some recommendations from the administration and from the school district. I'm hearing that the FEA already has ideas. I'd like to hear what those ideas are. It just seems like there's an elephant in the room, that people are, I've been hearing so many different scenarios that I would like to hear them maybe voiced in a public forum, and then kind of decide what we're talking about. Because right now, I'm sorry, take a breath. Right now, I feel like it really is a free-for-all. And it's really concerning, because I don't think any work is going to get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward? If not, back to the board. Any final comments the board members wish to make? So, Mr. Llewellyn, you get the last word.
Well, I pulled up the bylaws--
Maxon Cunnelly wishes to speak, so she gets the last word. Go ahead.
No, no.
Mr. Llewellyn.
So you, you kept referencing the bylaws, so I decided to pull them up. Is this an advisory committee or an ad hoc? What we just said is that they're synonymous. The advisory committee is, per our bylaws, advisory committees consisting of three board members appointed by the chair may be established by the majority of the board from time to time, so on and so forth. It doesn't say that we can actually have non-board members on these committees if it's going to be an advisory committee, which we just said was synonymous.
The whole--
The board shall provide a charge for the advisory committee, which shall include the preparation of a written report and recommendations for the board's consideration within a specified period of time. Upon the advisory committee's presentation of the report and recommendations to the board for consideration, the advisory committee shall be deemed dissolved, and only the board shall take further action. So I'm not sure that our bylaws allow us to open it up as a committee per se.
I don't have a copy of the bylaws, but the last time I read them, and it allows for the appointment of other community members as may be appropriate to the issue at hand.
Ms. Gerber, do you know? Do you have the bylaws? Nope?
That's the advisory committee. You said there's an ad hoc--
Well, we said they were one, one of the same.
We did not. We changed it.
To ad hoc, correct. But in the past, it was synonymous, and that's why there was-- But in the past, it was synonymous, and that's why there was unanimous consent to do that. And I did do a search for ad hoc and didn't see it. Doesn't mean it doesn't exist. But I just question the formation.
Thank you.
Wait, here we go. Am I reading an old version?
I don't know, but the second paragraph of that, thank you, Mrs. Gerber. The chairman and the superintendent or his delegate shall be ex officio members of the advisory committees, and the chairman may appoint ex officio advisors from the community for assistance in gathering information, preparing reports, and making recommendations. And so that paragraph is what caused me to say, the board members actually cast the vote, but the advisory committee members have generally acted by consensus. This board, by changing, by unanimous consent, the motion, has said that they should not be ex officio but voting. So it does, it does allow for...
Gotcha. Yep, so taken. So I guess the only question then is, is the voting legitimate or not legitimate?
If this board wants to make them voting, they can make them voting, in my view.
In contradict, but the bylaws say that they can gather information, they can prepare reports, and they can make recommendations.
Any other board members wish to make a comment before we vote on the motion that's in front of us, the main amendment, the main motion, which is effectively adopting the commission statement as changed to replace the word advisory with ad hoc in putting voting members in two locations? Mrs. Maxine Canelly?
I don't disagree that this has the potential to be a somewhat messy process. That we are, this is a whole different era for Board of Eds in which they are serving. And I guess what it is, is that I would rather start the conversation than keep trying to find the right, you know, bullet to put in the right gun, the fire to solve everything. It's, you know, and it could be that, as this committee rolls along, that in reports coming back, they make the suggestion for a revision to the commission statement, which I think the board at that time would be open to hearing. But I just think it would be a mistake to not get the ball rolling. The town expects this conversation to happen. We, no one has spoken against the idea of this conversation happening, and I accept that it's going to come with a little bit of messiness. And I have faith that this ad hoc committee, these people who are volunteering and who care and understand what an issue this is, that they're going to bring organization to it, that they put their stamp on, and carry forward. And as needs arise, and they aren't suited to fulfill all those needs, we will get that feedback and adjust accordingly. But it would just be a mistake to not get started.
Okay, I don't want to drag this conversation out to where I think I'm on the last comment, and then another hand goes up. Is Mrs. Lumicormick the last speaker? Forever hold your peace, Mrs. Lumicormick.
So in taking in the comments from the public regarding this concern about a chaotic process, I think that, in fact, this is really, in fact, gathering kind of a process. And the board, there's nothing to stop the board, I would imagine, to continue to create our own list of things to investigate. And in fact, is, the board could, in fact, charge the committee with including the five, whatever, ideas that we have for them to investigate and consider in tandem with other ideas that they have, and give the pros and cons for all of them, which allow them to help do further research and kind of public information and sentiment gathering for us on our behalf.
Correct.
And so I don't believe that this formation is anything other than adding the public element and including that other perspective as part of the official process for the Board of Ed. I don't know that it relieves the Board of Ed from its own duty of creating its own list of ideas. And therefore, I don't think that it would create chaos. I guess if we were only reliant on their opinion, that would be one thing. But I would imagine that the board and the superintendent and staff would be able to, coincidentally, also work on ideas and be in communication with the committee. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And I would go so far as to say that, Mr. Llewellyn, I want you to hear this, that it doesn't have to be a majority of the board that brings an idea forward. You know, if an individual board member says, I think the committee ought to look at this, you ought to feel free to send that into the superintendent, or go to a committee meeting and bring it up directly at the committee meeting. I don't think any member of this board is prevented from making any suggestions directly to this committee. So, having said that, are we ready for a vote? The motion in front of us, where's my official, is that the Board of Education hereby moves to establish an advisory committee on operational effectiveness, per BOE bylaws, Article II, Section 4, Paragraph B, and approve the charge as amended, as described in the commission statement, per enclosure number one. All in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lumicormick, Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxine Canelly, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Asa, thank you very much. The motion passes eight to one. Good discussion. I hope to get the list out as soon as possible, if I can get one or two more names, so that I have it as complete as possible. Onto the next item, financial review of 2016-17. Do you wish to make any comments before Mrs. Monsell comes up?
Just thank you to Ms. Monsell for excellent work at the end of last year. As you remember, about halfway through the year, we were in quite a large hole, and it took huge efforts last year to really work to get through this budget. So thank you, Ms. Monsell, and it's all yours.
Okay. I'm going to concentrate on this sheet with the budget transfers, with the blue on it. You've seen columns one and two before. Column one is the projected balance, which was, comes from this sheet that you've also seen with the projected savings and accounts with deficits that brought us to the 550. Column two are the transfers you already approved. Column three is the actual balance as of June 30th. We brought it down to about $90,000. We have to, as I explained in my memo, we still need a balance at the end of June for expenses that were incurred in the fiscal year, but we haven't yet been invoiced for our staffing cost. Column four is the actual balance, even though we close on June 30th, we call it a soft close. After those other expenses are known in July, we actually have to close the end of July, and had ended up with a balance of roughly almost $1,500. Those are the expenses that are reported. We have to do this in July, so that we can report it on the state report that's due July, June, yeah, September 1st. We were able to, as we balanced things towards the end of the year, make purchases that were, for items that were on hold. That million dollars that was frozen for a good part of the year, we were able to make purchases in the areas that they were budgeted in, mainly capital, maintenance projects, and instructional materials. And that's the nuts and bolts of what happened at the end of the year. If there's any questions?
Questions from board members on the year-end report? Mrs. Pitco?
I think the question is, through the chair, to Dr. Jones. If the state doesn't pass the budget come October 1st, do we not get our ECS funding, and then that impacts all of the projects and everything that we projected?
And so I'll ask the superintendent to answer that question, but I'll encourage board members to focus on the item that's in front of us at the moment, which is last year's balance.
ECS does flow through the town for us, so we have really counted on zero going into this year, because we knew that it was going to be this type of a year. And because we have 2.3 million frozen right now, it will stay that way, and we will not spend those dollars until we know what the budget is doing this year.
Questions on the year-end report? Mr. Llewellyn?
The third paragraph that says, throughout the month of July, wages earned and invoices incurred within the fiscal year were paid with 1617 funds. So was that a carry forward so we could get ahead in the current fiscal with payroll in anticipation of the cuts to come?
No.
Not sure what that sentence means.
No, that column three, the actual balance at the end of June, that 90,000, we...
I'm sorry, I was reading paragraph three.
Yeah, paragraph three I'm here.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Right. That's referring to column three.
Okay.
With that balance of about 90,000 at the end of June, that's still 1617 funds that we expend in July for work that happened in the end of, you know, in June, that we process in July. It's got nothing to do with the 1718 year. It has to do with things that happened in June that we're paying for in July.
So throughout the month of July, wages earned and invoices incurred within...
The fiscal year.
The prior fiscal year, not the current fiscal year.
Thank you, yep.
That was my confusion. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so for board members who know how payroll works, if you work on the 28th, 29th, 30th, that's part of that accounting period, but generally, you don't get the actual check until sometime in July. Other questions from board members? Mr. Patton?
You mentioned in your opening paragraph there about instructional materials, and we were able to, obviously, we know maintenance projects were held off, and then we could do what we could do. In terms of, I want to say, direct education-related things, obviously, everything is directly or indirectly related to education, but things like instructional materials, or maybe through the chair to the superintendent, were there any things like that that we could not pay for with the shortfall, in terms of things like instructional materials that we needed that we had to push off?
That's a great question. I'd have to go back and pull the list, because last, between last year and this year, we've had so much frozen, I would really want to check the list, because most of last year, it was just over a million. And our goal by the end of the year was trying to make sure that when we knew we were going to be okay, to be able to purchase anything that we knew had been budgeted, which the board had directed us to do when we, when you first saw that balance. That was, I think, was that the early June one or May? But I would have to actually give you, I would have to go back and look at the exact list. But we felt like we actually did very well at the end of last year, being able to take care of what we needed to do. And then we started looking forward to this year and freezing what was happening in the summer, but that's this year's budget.
Okay, yeah, I'd be curious to see if there was, you know, whether it's supplemental textbooks, you know, minor amounts of books that were, you know, damaged and had to be replaced, or supplemental materials for an entire class that we're going to hold off on, like, just to kind of get an idea of what we did and what we couldn't do. So, thanks.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Maxine Canelly?
Just to follow up on that, first, to Mr. Dwyer, is it, am I correct that the October, that first October meeting will be talking about budget priorities such as they are?
Correct.
So if I, through the chair to Dr. Jones, if we could have a recap, well, a specific recap of all of the items then frozen, because I think that might be good... Well, a review of last year and what so far was frozen for this year, I think it'd be good to have that list up in front of us, you know, to assess as part of that priority discussion.
And I presume you'd want to make that part of the board package, so you'd have a chance to look at it before the board meeting. Any other comments on the year-end financial statement? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the first reading of policy 5113. Attendance, excuses, dismissal. Mrs. Maxine Canelly?
Just very briefly, I want to make very clear to the board that the policy committee looked at nothing in this entire policy except for this line. So I'm, obviously, it is before us for a vote. I'm not about to restrict the board from looking at the rest of the policy if they so wished. I just want to make clear that we, as a policy, this is a statute-driven change that we made here. There's only a change on page one, I'll save you the flipping, that in terms of this definition of an absence had to be updated. I just repeat, we looked at nothing else in the policy. We made, you know, just made sure to understand this change, made this change, and so we did not, if there's anything else of issue with the language in this policy, that's not something that was a part of our discussion. And as always, I welcome question, well, I welcome questions now, as well as prior to the next meeting.
Mrs. Gerber?
Well, I did notice that we just approved a revised version of this policy less than a year ago. And I did go back and look to see what the old one looked like, and there were significant changes or additions made to that policy. But this one, so this is basically pretty updated, it's just that one line, that's statute-driven.
Yes.
Okay.
Another comment, this will be on the agenda for the October 10th meeting as a voting item. On to business item number five, approval of the minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of September 12, 2017. Mrs. Gerber makes the motion. Mrs. Maxine Canelly makes the second. I'll pick you up on the second, last set of minutes. Any discussion among the board members on this? If none, all in favor of the, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of September 12, 2017, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, thank you very much. The second set of minutes is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 12, 2017. I have a motion. Ms. Pitco seconds it. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Philip Dwyer, Ms. Pitco, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxine Canelly, opposed. Mrs. Lumicormick and Mr. Llewellyn. Motion passes seven to two. Superintendent's report?
Just a couple of things, just an update on our two new pre-Ks at Stratfield are going fantastic. And just as a reminder, one of the items that was frozen in our budget for this current year was the permanent playground for the pre-K at that site. So the staff did do a terrific job putting in temporary, more Little, when you think of Little Tykes type play area, and it's working really, really well. But just, those two classes being located next door to each other has just been a great benefit. So I just wanted the board to know. Also, we have our two new CLCs. One of them was at Osborne, where they'd already had the first CLC. But we also have the second one at Burr, and that's going terrific. And Mr. Bluestein, who spoke tonight, is hosting that program for us, and just delighted with how well that's working out. Our back-to-school nights, we have, we've almost completed them all. We have two more this week, and I've had great feedback on those, and parents feel like they're really getting terrific information from the schools. We will be sending our S-Back information out to parents next week. That's something everybody waits on this time of the year. And then, just as a reminder, in October, we will have a meeting where we'll share district-level results with the board, and then also go over our district improvement plan and how that went for us last year. So, thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent on the topics covered? Mrs. Maxine Canelly?
Just very quickly, I noticed I didn't believe that the Stratfield pre-K looked full. Is that still accepting enrollment?
It is still at Stratfield. Do you know the numbers, Mr. Cummings, or is that today?
Sixteen in the morning and 13 in the afternoon.
And our ECC program is smaller right now as well, because that's where the program will grow. That was for the additional numbers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for the superintendent, comments? Ms. Carnell?
Dr. Jones, I think you said we have two meetings left for the parents to be at the schools, you know? So I think one of the first ones was Fairfield-Ludlow High School, and every other school down unquote road. You couldn't, you couldn't park. You couldn't move. I mean, people were just parking anywhere, and I was going to ask, maybe some of those schools, you alternate, because you...
Well, one of the, it was, Roger Ludlow didn't have their open house, but they had their family picnic the same night, so that's not the school district, that's PTA.
Who did that? Oh, okay, they should check.
And then also, I believe Fairfield Prep also had their open house that night. That has nothing to do with Fairfield Public Schools either.
Well, who is checking this with the other town body? No, because I'm telling you, it took, every parent was late, and, right, and obviously, nobody wanted to get in trouble with their homeroom teacher, so it was...
Any other comments for the superintendent, questions? Seeing none, on to committee liaison reports. Any board member wishes to report on a committee? Ms. Pitco?
I believe I mentioned this at the last meeting, but tomorrow night at 7:30, McKinley is a septum meeting, the first one of the year. is a septum meeting, the first one of the year, and Mr. Mancusi is going to come, introduce himself to the parents and get to know them.
Mr. Acer, did I see your hand go up, and then followed by Mrs. Max and Canelli?
Yeah, just regarding Holland Hill, the last meeting, they, you know, was nothing very eventful, was approving invoices, and for anyone interested or that was planning to go this week, the meeting on Thursday, the regularly scheduled meeting, has been canceled due to lack of anything substantive.
Any questions for Mr. Acer? Mrs. Max and Canelli?
Just regarding PTA Council, they've only, they had an executive session, executive leadership meeting in September, and we look forward to the first meeting in October. And also, just a note to the public, that PTA Council will be hosting a forum for candidates for Board of Ed on November 1st. And so that's something that PTA Council will be looking to drum up publicity for.
Any questions for Mrs. Max and Canelli? Hearing none, Mrs. Gerber?
Just an update with Fairfield-Ludlow. They, committee approved a bunch of invoices from all of the windows that were installed over the summer, and Mark Donald, who is the building committee chair, will be going to the Board of Selectmen to give them an update. But really, it's just an update to say everything went as well as it possibly could have in the first summer, and fingers crossed, it will continue to do so next summer.
What percentage of the windows roughly has been replaced?
Approximately 70%. As I said last time, the reason why it was so lopsided is because they did all of the easier windows this summer, and the more complicated ones that require masonry and a more difficult extraction are going to be next summer, so it'll still take all summer. But it, you know, but a lot of them, and they look great actually, having been at open house, I will say. You could really tell the difference between the new windows and the old windows, so...
Any other committee or liaison reports? Any other committee or liaison reports? Having none, open board comment? Anybody wish to make any comments at this time? Any open board comment? Mr. Acer, did you have a comment that you wanted?
No, I will let Mrs. Max and Canelli handle that.
Mrs. Max and Canelli?
Well, heck with you, but I have, I have to do my annual plug. I just want to say, very excited to be talking about Odyssey of the Mind at several of our PTAs. I'll be speaking with North Stratfield Jennings, I've had contact from Tomlinson Stratfield, and I also reached out to Sherman, and I'm sure McKinley is well underway as well, and just, this is my chance with a microphone in front of me to remind PTAs that I would love to help anybody who's interested in getting this program started.
Open for me, yes, October 10th meeting, we will be putting on the agenda for the board to suggest any budget concepts or ideas that they would like the superintendent to consider when fashioning the 1819 budget. So please come prepared with any ideas that you want to put on the table. We don't do it by vote, we just simply say we take all ideas, and then, and then the superintendent looks to see what she can and cannot fit into a budget for next year. So please be ready for that particular agenda item on the 10th. In November, I remind the board and perhaps people in the community who may be interested in serving on the Board of Ed, that November 16 through 18 is the annual Cabe Conference. We have reserved spots for the candidates, and then we'll wait until the election is over to determine, one, who won, and, two, whether they can fit that conference, which we all highly recommend, into their schedule. So you might want to put for the board members the 16 through 18 period on your calendar. November 15th, we'll be holding the bylaws required orientation session for new board members. So people who might be in that position should, should put that date on their calendar. Remind you that the next meeting, the only meeting in November is the 28th, which is both a regular meeting and an organizational meeting. And board members that may wish to bring forth any bylaw changes, the idea is that you present the idea at that meeting, and then we fashion, you fashion the language you want to change, and we vote at the December meeting. And of course, the December meeting is December 10th. Any other comments that people wish to make, wish to make at the board table? If none, to public comment we go. Any member of the public wish to come forward to speak on an agenda item now that you've heard discussion and whatnot? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Sally Connolly, 682 Tungus Hill Road. And yes, to Jennifer, our McKinley Odyssey of the Mind is getting up and running with Suzanne Goseppa. I will also just do an additional McKinley World Fair plug again for November 4th from 10:30 to 2:30. I do have one question in regard to one of the committee reports about the preschools. At some point, I had written a letter addressed to a few members and spoke about it with Dr. Jones, just asking a question about how the filtration was happening once the applications were put into the preschools. My kids went to ECC, and then when the McKinley was an onsite preschool, and when the change was made to the preschool application process, basically, all the applications were put into one pool. And I'm curious, whoever is assigning the different locations for the students, if they have taken into consideration the ELL students going to the offsites versus being some of the typical peers for the ECC students? Because at the time when my kids were there, they actually had kind of a, basically, like an audition process to see who would be the best matches for some of the kids in the program. So that was something I was curious, to see how that was being addressed, and if it was effective in moving some of the ELL kids who maybe would have moved into the McKinley district, filtering some kids to the Burr and Stratfield locations.
Thank you. For members of the public who may not be aware, we take public comment, but do not at a regular meeting engage in back-and-forth conversation on that issue. However, at town hall meetings that we hold three times a year, that's the time where we are, have an opportunity to have dialogue back and forth. Anybody else wish to come forward? Please state your name and address on a subject that you've not already talked about.
Okay, I promise. Suzanne Muska, 123 Rygate Road. I know that the absence policy is pretty much state-mandated, as they've dictated the number of excused absences you can have. I just wish that there was some way that the Board of Ed policy could make some sort of adjustment to it, only because as a mother who spent Thursday, last year, trying to balance college visits and when your child actually gets sick, I'm going to tell you that nine excused absences gets a little dicey once we get to Accepted Students Day. I mean, while we try to do as much as you can on a day that is not a school day, it would be helpful to be able to have some sort of caveat that allows for college visits to be outside of the scope of being looked at. I mean, you kind of get to March, and if your kid's had a cold or the flu or whatever, that nine creeps on you pretty quickly, and there's really no, nothing you can do to manage it going forward. So I wish there was some way that policy could give a little more latitude, especially in that year when you're trying to accomplish that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the public wish to come forward? Seeing none, the recommended motion for adjournment is that this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourn. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Patton seconds. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, thank you very much.